I'd like to call this regular town board meeting for the town of Bayfield to order for Tuesday, July 1st, 2025. Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg.
Here.
Trustee Zizaro.
Here.
Trustee Hartz.
Here.
Trustee Katzos.
Here.
Trustee Moreland.
Here.
Trustee McLaren.
Here.
And Mayor Ah.
Here. All rise for the pledge.
Pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does the board have any conflicts of interest?
No.
No.
Nope.
Next up is general public input for those items not on the agenda. Does anyone in the public have any comments, questions, concerns?
This is not the, um, this is...
I have a right to probably...
No, you don't. This is not town business.
Yes, it is.
This is not town business. The charges have been dismissed.
No, no, I was just in with the DHD.
The, this is not the, this is not the venue for this.
Alexis, let her speak.
She's got, I...
She has a right to speak.
You got your two minutes.
Well, she's got two minutes.
I know, I know. I'm giving you two minutes. Go ahead.
So anyway, so this is going on and she is on tape, so she don't want anybody to know. She's on videotape as protecting the, and the protection of my yard. Also, there's special witnesses, white witnesses, as to her striking my vehicle and what happened there. And, you know, the sad part about it is she has continued to do stuff. She's manipulating the system and continues to manipulate the system. And I can't deny it because I don't think that white justice is simply what this is all about. And I will continue to fight this until I get the resolution that needs to happen because no elected official, I've played many policies, not elected official is supposed to go to anybody's house and confront them. And yes, I did put the petition, but you know, I was asked if I would want to do it and I did. And you know what? And then petition comes up, it's my right to do it and push it through. And, you know, I feel that this stuff is considered quite risky and that's how it's been. I'm working with the Bureau, I'm working with the judge at this point. I had meaning here and I will continue it. If I have to keep going, I'm looking for something. And if she comes to my house, I can forgive her. I have a right to mine against her, my house. And nobody can tell her how to talk to her unless I have the right. So she's a personal court trustee. But you know what? We're not just here and we're not fighting and having to do anything. They can't handle this. And we can choose to be very light on this. We never have due for this, it's very important to be careful of this. It's not just for money, which is not supposed to be done. Last week was, I got pictures of you, so you can come to me if you need to.
Any other public comment?
As you know, I'm Phyllis Ludwig, 9205 Cannon Road, 521. As you all know, I don't live in the town limits. The former town manager told one of my friends that didn't live in town limits that what we say doesn't matter, but I'm gonna say it anyway. I've been coming to these meetings since 1965, to the town board meetings that I could attend, and it's been a hell of a lot of them, let me tell you. And I have never witnessed such animosity among some of the board members and the lack of common sense on some issues. Spending money on some unnecessary projects has been rampant. You need a real budget and not a bankrupt Bayfield budget. Get over your personal feelings, work together on keeping our town infrastructure up to par instead of new projects. And I think that's what you two of you should do. Forget biting each other's back and everything else and tend to business. Thank you.
Ryan Blanchard, 627 Louisiana Drive. So, big thank you to all of you for bringing the Master Park Clan to the forefront. That's great. I appreciate that. I know a lot of other people do as well. I've always been a believer that great parks make great towns. So, I wanna thank you for that and we'll see how far we get. The other thing is on the Rogers tax. Reading through it, I was just curious and wondering since there's at least one attorney in the room, whether the language is strong enough or included things such as any and all short-term vacation rentals, such as, but not limited to Airbnb, VRBO, La Casa and others. Those were not mentioned in the list of short-term rentals. And I, it may not be a big deal, attorneys may look at it differently, that it is covered in short-term rentals as a blanket kind of thing, but I think these are popping up other new companies and whatnot. It would be good to kinda be able to protect ourselves if we're gonna collect a tax of who and how we do that. So, thank you.
Any other public comment?
Hi, good evening, Brad Blake. What's that?
I'm sorry, I thought you were skipping your name.
Oh.
I interrupted too soon, I'm sorry.
It's alright. Brad Blake. I just wanted to kinda give a quick update on Pine River Commons. Things are going well out there. I don't know if many of you have driven by, but we finished about a third of the Bayfield Parkway improvements that we were slated to do, and they look very good. We have a lot, we have seven new families there that are doing really well, enjoying it, and we have three young couples that have just moved in and we're slated to have another move-in in two weeks, which will be a veteran. And so, we're really fulfilling the, the goal of the project that Charlie had from the beginning. And I just wanted to give you an update, invite you all to come by again. The town planning director came by for a meeting when Dola was in town. Dola came and did a visit to the site. And the town planning director came by and he was surprised that he was the first person from the town to come by to really do a tour of the homes. If you ever wanna come and do a tour of the homes, we'd love to have you. And it, we continue to press forward. Home sales have been a little slow the past month and a half. I attribute that a lot to just general interest rates, but we are continuing to move forward and have some, have some good opportunities there. But thank you again for your, your help and your work on this. I'd like to thank town staff, especially Kathy for her work on the Dola grant. Those aren't easy grants to pull together and they can, they can be frustrating. I know they are for us, but we really wanna thank town staff for, for all their efforts and, and thank you again to all of you. Thanks.
Thanks, Brad.
Thank you. Is there any other public input?
Same as Brad, I'm gonna give you a quick update on the Cinnamon Heights. Man, these months feel like they're going by fast here. But we've got Cinnamon Drive closed, so we're tearing up the asphalt. We're gonna get in there and take care of the water, and then after that start running utilities and E-Pave. So, I think we should have that road back open. I'll be optimistic, say four weeks from now. I think it's only six, but I don't think it's really effective.
Thank you.
Happy 4th of July.
Happy 4th.
Any other public input? Moving on to the community grant request action item. No, I keep missing that. Sorry, my bad. Has the board had a chance to look over the agenda?
Yes.
Looking for a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
A second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Zizaro.
Yes.
Trustee Hartz.
Yes.
Trustee Katzos.
Yes.
Trustee Moreland.
Yes.
Trustee McLaren.
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Yes. Now we'll move on to the community grant request. Four Corners Underground, $1,000 grant request.
Bear with me, I'm a little bit nervous. I'm a public speaker. My name's Travis Valencia. I am the president for the youth wrestling club, Four Corners Underground. Some of you may remember, we were in here two years ago on startup and you guys gave us a grant as well. I'll just tell you a little bit about our club. So, I started, my kids started wrestling about 16 years ago and looking around, I saw a gap in Bayfield. There was wrestling communities that if you weren't in that group, you didn't know where wrestling happened or couldn't get anything off-season. So, our goal was to, to bring a club to the community where every kid could be involved. Our monthly dues are 20 bucks a month. You go to Aztec, it's 180 bucks a month. We've tried to make this available for every kid in town. We've definitely grown as an organization, but we still have bills. So, some of the stuff that we need to pay for is, we've got coaches that are volunteers, but if we wanna travel, we've gotta pay their meals, their hotel rooms, stuff like that. And our, our philosophy is no kid left behind. We don't want anybody to have money be an excuse for them not to be involved in our wrestling club. So, basically that's what we've started. We're probably 95% Bayfield, 5% Ignacio, 5% Durango. We currently, we're operating out of Bayfield High School right now, so we've gotta pay a monthly due for the usage of the room. We've also got an insurance that we've gotta pay every month and everything that goes along with our 501(c). Today, we're asking for the grant because we are low on funds. We do have a new fundraiser guy, Brad, that was appointed, so he, he helped us set this up tonight. As we're trying to grow, obviously, funds are, funds are gonna be tight. We're trying to figure out the, the dynamics of it, but we're, we're asking for that $1,000 tonight to help us keep going. You guys have any questions?
Questions from the board?
How many, how many students do you have?
So, it depends on, on the season. So, right before mid-school starts, right after football, we get up to 15 to 20. That's, that's ages four all the way through high school. It seems to be growing each year, especially as, as we're promoting more off-season training and more off-season tournaments that they can participate in. I expect this year we're gonna be around 25 to 30 kids.
Now, after, I, I, when I was looking at our packet, I found you guys, I think it was on Facebook, and was seeing all of the things that you did. So, I think it's a great program.
That's been another great thing for us. Four out of the five high school kids at State this year are kids in Bayfield. If we're out of the five, it's gonna be basically the same for other kids as well. It's a lot of different issues. It should be great. I think we're doing the right stuff.
Dustin, do we have one in the grant fund?
We do. We have one $1,000 grant left. We have all of the $500 grants left. The only ones that are expended are the $1,500 ones and the $500 school fund.
Am I reading your information wrong? It says the $1,000 nonprofit grants are expended.
It's the $1,500s.
Uh, there's two. The top one says expended for $1,500 and then three $1,000 also is expen... I'm not seeing one. Oh, okay. Got it, got it, got it. Okay, just double checking. Thank you.
I don't have the packet in front of me. He's got a leg up on me.
It's my eyeballs. Speaking of eye issues.
Well, when I look at it, it's July 1st and we still have a grant left. So, I mean, I'm surprised people don't come and bang on the door in January when we are offering these. So, I think this is a, you said 95% of the kids doing this are in Bayfield and I, when I was in middle school and high school, I actually was part of a club swim team and I do, I see what the advantages are and how that benefits and even having that after-school activity that's there. So, I think it's great. And I would be for this grant.
I think, I think whatever we can do that'll pursue the, the community itself and I'll see this project.
For the comments?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the $1,000 grant requested for Four Corners Underground.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any public comment? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Zizaro.
Yes.
Trustee Hartz.
No.
Trustee Katzos.
Yes.
Trustee Moreland.
Yes.
Trustee McLaren.
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Great public speaker.
Yeah, you did great.
Approval of the minutes, department reports, work session attendance and financial action agenda. It's the, first up is approval of the minutes for June 17th, 2025. Has the board had a chance to look those over?
Yes. A second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion, comments? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Zizaro.
Yes.
Trustee Hartz.
Yes.
Trustee Katzos.
Yes.
Trustee Moreland.
Yes.
Trustee McLaren.
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Yes. Attendance for the work session on June 17th, 2025. Yeah.
Not approved, it's accepted.
It's an acceptance.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the attendance for the work session dated June 17th, 2025.
A second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Zizaro.
Yes.
Trustee Hartz.
Yes.
Trustee Katzos.
Yes.
Trustee Moreland.
Yes.
Trustee McLaren.
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Yes. June 2025 expenditures. Does the board have any questions?
Um, I, I do. Just a couple.
Sure.
The shared use path, there's a payment there. Are we done? Are we done? Awesome. Okay. And then there was a, a payment to the Los Pino Stitch Company. Was that in regards to the Cinnamon Heights piece of that?
No, I haven't paid that one. How much was it?
Uh, hang on. It's on page 16. And Dustin's page numbering, not your page numbering for your...
Oh, okay.
Um, hang on one second. It is... Hold on.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. It is.
Yes. Okay, okay. And let's see. Also, I was under the impression that it was S-E-H that's doing the design for the east intersection. Is that correct? Um, how come we paid a short Elliott and Hendrickson? That is? Okay. Got it. I did not know that. I thought, I had no idea what the acronym stood for. I am learning a lot tonight. Thank you, sir. That's wonderful. And is there any funding issues with Cinnamon Heights? Are we, how's that going?
That grant's moving along smoothly.
Beautiful. Okay, lovely. That's all my questions. Thank you. That was easy.
Any other questions?
I'm curious, do the access health systems for detox, what does, what does that entail?
We get a yearly bill to utilize them for any alcohol-related arrests or incidents. So, it's mandated that we have to utilize them before they go to jail.
Any other questions?
No.
Pleasure of the board.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the June 2025 expenditures.
A second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Zizaro.
Yes.
Trustee Hartz.
Yes.
Trustee Katzos.
Yes.
Trustee Moreland.
Yes.
Trustee McLaren.
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Yes. Parks and Trails Director report.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, Parks and Trails, month of June, normal operations. We did do some extra fire mitigation, lots of finding new courses. We also, we can bring them out on the day of the tour, maybe next year now. We are in the state to get the water from the river, it's closer to the water. Rich, it's good.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Um, the driving park shake structure is done. Town staff, park staff put up the canopy. Dan didn't want to contact us and put the canopy up right there in the concrete carefully. Which is good, but they have a project, so we did it and then we built our tax, then we built and then we covered the house. Save some money, guys. Well, we looked at the library, we discussed and demoed the concrete. We did leave concrete around the, the, uh, drinking fountain area and the spring and summer, which is kind of a little bit more black. The leak was just like, it's a downed pipe, it's about shooting the water out there. We played a two-inch coupling moment, it's a water building, so that's temporarily fixed. And then considering Jeremy was pretty good there, I turned out there. So, excited to do, we have some DJ and I mentioned Bill Fonge, they're in Waco. We've got a new construction plant, 1005. We have a lot of different programs available. Modernization, showing some of the back and forth. The Southwest Conservation Corps. So, they hired me to, I like to be the library manager, but also through the, to improve the fire protection. RFPs do have to be out this month. Have a lot of time, I'll meet with the guys next week. They got a lot, a lot of stuff out there. CW does like fishing access grants. Also, we have our, it's open to the yard. It's ready for, for our area, but not like, they have to be back. And they also like this to, maybe we're too long. But all in all, it was a good meeting. They were very thoughtful.
Good job, Mark.
I think that's great. I was wondering, was there anything particular that they were talking about that you're interested in?
Well, the, the quarter to help with the space, you know, CW with fishing access, they have stewardships and other things that maybe we might be able to get in other programs as a cover that do, then, you know.
The park plan, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, we're gonna go back to groundwork and, and buy our, that hopefully, it's all about the parents. They could help us with that or do you have any, you know, to, 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 to?
That's awesome.
Yeah, I look forward to knocking my, to, to, to.
Well, thank you for taking the initiative and going to that meeting to find out this information. Yeah.
We were definitely the squeaky wheel in the room.
I like that.
We had a park plan to talk about and where it fit with them and I think what we learned a lot about is the local partnerships too with other entities like Trout Unlimited, you know, for these river access points and things like that. So, we kinda have some new ideas about maybe breaking some of the smaller elements out of that park plan and maybe finding how it works and then got me thinking about the CTF funds. So, I've been asking Kathy about those and how maybe those can be used as grant matches and things of that nature.
Kathy's good too, but the other things we're now are pretty much new.
Well, and I had a niece work for the Southwest Conservation Corps over, um, outside of Alamosa area and she thought it was a great organization and, you know, she loves to backpack and, so that's what they're into. Yeah, yeah. Yep. That's great.
Thanks, Mark. Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question? And I'm sorry I didn't think about this earlier. There's nowhere on this agenda where we can maybe get an update on what's going on for the 4th of July or the planning. Should we, can we ask that at the end or, cause typically I would think it would have been in a manager report at this point, but since there isn't one...
I think any questions we have, we can always ask them when they call our names.
Okay, at the end. Okay.
Yeah.
Cool. Thank you. Be prepared. Heads up. Questions are coming at the end. Heads up, questions are coming, at the end.
I mean, we can add it to the action agenda.
Yeah, maybe we do it before executive session?
Yeah.
I was thinking.
I mean, we can add an F onto the action agenda, and if maybe the chief would like to speak to that, at that point in time?
Yeah.
I'm volunteering you at this point, if that's okay?
Oh, I've got his Facebook post ready to read verbatim, about the five star, five-point star. But yeah, no, I think, yeah, if there's a way for us, I would just like to know what's going on, like, I feel like we haven't talked about anything for Friday, and I want to make sure we're all set. I know you're all set, I'm talking about these guys, yeah.
Uh, Bruce, I've inspired you about the fire, so, you know, we're covering the fireworks, uh, so I think, uh, it was very interesting to track down the rivers that the town canceled, uh, and, uh, surprisingly, not a lot of the rivers went through the business. So, uh, just a little bit about the rest, um, that's my job, is to make sure that we can protect the rest. So we're not shooting fireworks up against the counties like they are in Silver City, uh, and, uh, or, uh, so they're filling them up for the fire, so there's water everywhere. So we've already, um, staffed the overtime for that particular night, uh, five different fire apparatus, um, including some across the river, we'll have, uh, we'll have some fire apparatus, uh, bridges, uh, plenty of staff around, uh, the area. Where they're shooting, and where the public's gonna be, um, as I was telling a few people at the service center yesterday, uh, we're gonna plumb the hydrant, uh, from the senior centers, so we'll probably have that period locked off there, uh, which is a piece of that fire, uh, that's really helps out a lot of the water, so, I think, uh, the whole, uh, protection.
We'll start throwing up the signs on Thursday. You guys can do it, see, they're already ahead of it.
Awesome.
We got the site planned from the fireworks on Monday morning. I did send that out. They, there is some questions on that, and I don't know if they're on the road because they haven't answered our inquiry yet as to moving some of the mortar cannons.
Great. So staff's feeling pretty confident? Good. Thank you for sharing that on-spot updates.
Any other questions? Good.
Thank you for being so mindful about even what else could happen.
Thanks for letting us put you on the spot, everybody.
Hey, right when you walked in, I was like, he's here to talk.
Okay, so we're going to move on with the rest of the agenda that we skipped. Sales and lodgers tax discussion?
So I'll start off on that. Last meeting, I was asked to provide some resolutions. So the more research I did into it, the more I saw the resolutions actually lined out some of the funds and where things were going. So those resolutions are a little, and ordinances are a little farther ahead than where we are with those decisions, I feel. But I did re-find some old ones from the last time, actually, from Katie. So what I did is reformat some of the dates and things on there. But more than anything, I just wanted you guys to see before our work session, kind of what goes into those ordinances and resolutions on each of those taxes. And those were the same ones from last time. And I also threw in the resolution from, for the master park plan that was passed. So I think some of that could address some of that. I don't know if that would need to be rescinded. That'd be more of a question for the attorney, but I just wanted to throw that in there, just kind of get it out in front of you to see that before the work session. It was a 4% lodgers tax back then as well. That was also one of the decisions made on it, so. Kind of was nice to find. It made it a little bit easier. The one even has ballot language on it. So that was great to see. And it was, it was a little bit wordy, that ballot language, but it, to me, when I read it, I mean, it was pretty crystal clear where the funds were going.
Well, and to answer Brian Blanchard's concerns, there's a ordinance and then there's a resolution. So the ordinance defines what is included in the lodgers tax, and it's camping cabins, it's commercial property, lodging business, lodging unit, short-term rental, and recreational vehicles is all included. And it breaks it down as to what those each are defined. So I believe you included this, right? In your packet. So if you go to our packet and pull up the ordinance for the lodging, lodging tax, it lists all the properties that would be affected by that lodger's tax. Yeah. And it, it also identified the fact that it would be $20,000 that we would gain from the lodger's tax at 4%. And then also, let's see, what else I had highlighted? And it was, the resolution says the tax would be providing funding for parks, economic, economic development and workforce housing, and related lawful municipal expenses.
Again, I didn't make those decisions. I just found some of them and was like, nope. That words it pretty clearly, and it was nice to get it out in front of you.
So it pretty much carries forward. Just trying to move this thing.
Well, great, Dustin. I'm glad you didn't have to invent the wheel, you, or reinvent the wheel you found.
No, I kind of knew they were there because I remember those discussions.
Yeah, I did too.
Because I was pretty much hired right around then.
Okay.
So I was like, I bet you I can find it, and it's going to save me quite a bit. But again, I just wanted you guys to see, to see what actually goes into that and what we really need to truly talk about in that next work session. And is it feasible? Is it doable?
Do we, did we have that work discussion scheduled?
Oh, it's scheduled for our next, before our next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
So we're not taking any action on these?
Nope, just wanted to discuss it with you guys and again, get it out in front of you. So we, we know what we're looking at when we go. As far as that July 27th deadline, that's not the deadline for the resolution. I mean, the county clerk will look for it later. But 27th, I just need to show the vote that we went on to the ballot, wanted on to the ballot, and show how the roll call went.
Okay.
Is the, is there any other questions for Dustin?
Thank you.
And I think we're clear on the 4%, and we want to go through it.
Yep.
And put it on the agenda?
Yes.
Well, yeah, that would be the only, that would be the only thing that we should give direction on, is to make sure we are on the agen, next agenda.
And the resolution for the sales tax, because there's an ordinance and a resolution for each one, it was only originally for a half. So I think it was Ms. Sickle's draft form, because we did go for a 1% on that ballot. So I did change the numbers to match and reflect a 1% sales tax, just for reference. Yes, the master park plan, yeah.
I was talking earlier about the 4% for lodgers?
Yeah.
Thank you, Dustin.
Any other questions?
And I know it's a lot of extra work, and we're very appreciative. Because if these, if these initiatives go through, it will help us tremendously.
Trust me, if we can do that, I'll come up with new programs and we'll fill, we'll fill it up.
Wait a minute, can we get that in writing?
I just said it on public record. But you'll see it feeds into item 4C, we're going to talk about here in a minute.
Okay.
Next up is Cooper Fire Suppression System.
What about this agreement to you and the news that? We did get the address corrected, and there still are a few documents that we're going to.
If I may, Jeremy, the attached document to this agenda still has the wrong address, so. It's the old documents.
I, I did have one question on whether or not the suppression system came with any kind of warranty to begin with? Or was it just?
Yeah, I thought Kat had asked that when we looked at this the first time.
Yeah.
So they have a one-year warranty on all work.
And this would cover those additional pipes?
This, this would actually be the biggest agreement to inspect for the entire process. So that's the difference. Cooper Fire is saying all of their workmanship and the corrects, I think, would be under warranty. You, you guys, a different portion were failed than there is in the warranty section.
So Jeremy, I have a question. Before we had this failure, how long had it, had it been that we didn't have any issues with our sprinkler system?
It flooded in like '09 in this room.
In this room?
Uh-huh. And that was the last, that was the only issue.
The only other time it's ever happened? And when was this building built? What year? Do we know? '08?
'08.
'08?
It, in '09, when it flooded in here, there had been some work on the roof or something, and someone had left a hatch open over here. And it had froze, the sprinkler system had froze. That's why it froze.
Oh, okay. So it wasn't a faulty system?
I don't.
It was a, okay.
Yeah, but I want to say, though, that this, this incident that happened is a result of an anomaly for the weather. What other weather anomalies are we going to have and that could, you know?
Well, my, my question, yeah, my question is, if we, if we went that long without an issue that wasn't a naturally occurring faulty system issue, it was a weather-related issue, what if we were to, you know, do a sort of a maintenance every five years, have it inspected, instead of paying upfront to have these guys inspect their own work? This kind of, this whole thing just kind of pisses me off. Because you buy a refrigerator and they're like, oh, you better buy the extra warranty, you know, because you're like, it's a brand-new, stinking refrigerator. It shouldn't, you know, I shouldn't have to worry about this. So I just don't want to throw good money away. And I'm wondering if we elected to have it, put it on a cycle, we have it inspected every five years, or have it inspected right after an extremely cold weather snap, or I just don't know if we need to pay for this ongoing service agreement when we've just had everything replaced. It's brand-new.
Well, some of the pipes aren't brand-new, is what Jeremy was saying. And then this is just annually. So how often was it inspected before?
No, he said quarterly. It's quarterly.
Oh, it says annually in here.
Yeah. I guess that's my, that's my hurdle. I do too. It looks like it's 120 bucks. Right, right, yeah.
I definitely like the idea of the annual inspection. Yeah.
So does having an annual inspection help reduce our insurance cost?
Right. Every one-year warranty stuff.
Right.
So, I mean, I, I think we have a little bit of time to dive into this more, just to make sure we're not spending on that.
Great, okay. Thank you, Jeremy. I'll second.
Got a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg. Trustee Zazaro.
Yes.
Trustee Hartz.
No.
Trustee Katsos.
Yes.
Trustee Morland.
Yes.
Trustee McLaurin.
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Yes. Old middle school gym lease.
So I was going to talk about that a second ago, but I waited. Our lease is actually up today, was the renewal date. So I did make a couple edits on the old one, and I did send it to Michael for legal review. So wanted to get that secured before Leon left, because he knew the history and stuff and that. So I did get that done to secure our programs for another winter. We already have people hitting us up for renting it even in the summer. We have the dance classes still going in there. We did rent it out for a festival a couple weeks ago. And we have a cheerleading academy that would like to use it as well. We're still in kind of negotiations on that, because they have, they want a lot of time. So I have to be careful not to take up too many time blocks for my volunteer coaches. But the lease is up. We sent them their last payment recently for the last year's lease. And the only changes I made on it were the dates, and I put it that we could get in there at 5:00 instead of 6:00 o'clock to give us more flexibility for those coaches. Because it's different, when I first took over RAC, there was no Wolverine Academy in there. So we pretty much had the run of the place. We did daytime stuff all the time, but now that Wolverine Academy in there, we got to be good neighbors and make sure we're not running in there too early.
Dustin, item number five under utilities, is the June 30th, 2024 date correct?
No.
Okay. I figured that we need to, that's probably one of the things that just needs to be updated. And have they increased the, the cost of the rental?
No.
Okay, yeah, so.
That's why it was so hot.
You also want to look at item number 14 for the termination, because it's July 1st, 2023, ending July 30th, 2024. Sorry, you can just scroll through.
I thought I caught all those dates.
That's okay.
I can make those changes and get it sent over to Lena.
Yeah, that, that's all I was seeing.
Dustin, are you caught up on your dates?
Yes.
I'm just trying to give you time. Does the board have any other questions, concerns? Pleasure of the board?
Mr. Ram, make a motion to approve the old middle school gym lease with the corrections noted under utilities and termination to the dates.
I'll second.
Got a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg. Trustee Zazaro.
Yes.
Trustee Hartz.
Yes.
Trustee Katsos.
Yes.
Trustee Morland.
Yes.
Trustee McLaurin.
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Yes. Planning Commission Ex officio.
So this was something we discussed last meeting, and I believe Trustee Nyberg volunteered. Hopefully he hasn't changed his heart, so. It's something that was asked to be put on the agenda for when the mayor either has to recuse or cannot make the planning commission meetings.
Like Tom, have you looked at the agenda?
He'll be on call next Tuesday.
Volunteer, just remember that.
And how many phones do you carry, Matt?
We did post on the town website that we do have an opening on the planning commission to contact me, and nobody's contacted me, so. Spread the word, we still need a member on that board.
Pleasure of the board?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to nominate, approve?
Approve.
Approve? Trustee Nyberg as our planning commission ex officio.
I'll second.
Am I allowed to vote on that? I don't see why not.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, I'm just checking before I called it. Got a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg.
Show more enthusiasm!
Trustee Zazaro.
Yes, please.
Trustee Hartz.
Yes.
Trustee Katsos.
Yes.
Trustee Morland.
Yes.
Trustee McLaurin.
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Yes. And your first assignment, trustee, Nyberg would be next Tuesday? Both items I need to recluse myself from, so they need a voting member? You want to mark your three cell phones?
Thank you for taking that on, Matt.
Next up is trustee Morland's request to discussion whether to pursue proceedings of removal of a trustee under CRS Section 31-4-307.
Yes. So on December 4th, 2024, there was a incident that happened between trustee Hartz and Lucy in the audience. And trustee Hartz was issued a citation for harassment in violation of CRS 18-9-111A. And the criminal matter has been transferred to a diversion process, which should be completed in November of 2025. However, it, I believe, and it's the board that can make the decision, that it's still a clear violation of CRS 31-4-404, and that it could potentially expose the town to possible pecuniary and civil liability. The thought is that when Mayor Ah made a statement that we would address this at the end of the proceedings, so I wanted to bring it before the board to make a decision on whether or not charges should commence. As a result of, we said we would address this at the end of the charge, which is in court proceedings.
The diversion is complete and the case has been dismissed.
That's not what, I'm, I'm not arguing that fact.
So there's nothing, there's nothing.
Again, I will repeat what I said. The criminal matter has been transferred to a diversion process. However, this action is still a clear violation.
The diversion is complete.
I'm not talking about the diversion. I'm talking about CRS 31-4-404, which is a completely different thing that has to do with our town and our, our.
But what are your written charges?
I don't have written charges for you. This is a discussion amongst the town board on whether or not we want to proceed with written charges.
You had your two minutes. Stand up to the mic.
Dismissed.
Let her speak.
This is not what a diversion program is. I'm sorry. And so, either I am to let me know I'm going to pursue and have it received here. And I feel threatened, had you been my shoes, you would have felt threatened and thought she was going to smack me. But you know more than that. And you know what? I have lived in this community for a while, and we treat it like that, and to happen, look to the bishop for it. This is totally unacceptable. I still feel threatened. I had to be a lawyer, used to my house. You know what? I don't sleep without a gun, because I don't trust her. She was so out of control that day, and I don't want somebody in here that's making decisions for me and doing, taking care of stuff that affects me on my daily living and where I live. I appreciate for the police department here, because they believe they're doing justice, and you know, there's enough documentation. I still want to stay here that she's going to be going to my house. I still do. People ask me, my neighbors ask me, people from the family, for example, if I'm shot. If you say that about all this, and the fact that she's still standing on the door, somebody needs to be there. And I feel, I feel threatened, and I feel like she was so out of control, but she's seen that happen, and if you don't know that, we should watch out for it.
Once again, the diversion is complete as of May 18th, and the case is dismissed.
So folks, we've got a couple of different issues going on right now, and with total appreciation for Lucy's situation and so forth. We've got a situation where a matter has been handled through the criminal courts.
And I'm not saying.
What we're dealing with today is a trustee asking whether or not this board of trustees wishes to pursue any additional charge from a civil standpoint under CRS 31-4-307. It's a separate, completely separate issue. This board may determine that it does not, it would rather just allow the criminal process to proceed. We heard from the alleged victim in this matter that it is proceeding. She's spoken with the district attorney, she's spoken with the judge. It's, it's for this board to determine based upon Ms. Morland's request whether or not the board wishes to proceed from the board's standpoint under Title 31, okay? If it does wish to do that, there is a whole new proceeding that should take place whereby a formal charge is brought. That remains to be seen as to how that happens, who brings that? And a process by which trustee Hartz is entitled to due process through a hearing, and there would be a whole process and procedure that happens through that. So there's not going to be any sort of decision today. It's just a decision with regards to whether the board, by majority or unanimously or power, wants to pursue a charge and then go through this due process procedure.
Well, it is my feeling that our citizens should not feel threatened by any representation of this town, ever. None of us have any right to go to your property or anyone's property and threaten them and harass them. I find this behavior absolutely appalling. It is a poor representation of who we are and what we're here to serve, and we are to serve the people of this town. There is no reason.
And I'm so sorry.
I know, but I, I am, I am speaking to the feelings, or I'm trying to meet.
Yeah. But can I caution you, if I may, with all due respect, that if, in fact, this board does choose to hold a hearing,
Yep.
it is a quasi-judicial process.
Certainly.
And so I would caution you with regards to your remarks, that any remarks you make are not necessarily conclusory.
Sure, I understand that. I understand that. I understand that. So I, I am, I'm definitely open to a hearing, a quasi-judicial hearing in regards to whether trustee Hartz should remain on this board and represent this community.
Well, I look at it this way, the courts have dismissed it because they haven't found anything and wrongdoing there, so I'm not, I don't wish to pursue, pursue that. I don't know if the rest of the board wants to speak to it, or if you want to go to a vote, or how you want to do this, but.
Once again, I've gone through the revision, or the diversion process. The diversion process is complete. The dismissal is complete. I have been dismissed, the case has been dismissed, and I have been vindicated. There's nothing there. I'm not an attorney. I can't explain it to you.
Actually, that was what I was about to ask Michael, because a quick Google search says it's alternative to traditional prosecution in the criminal justice system. It allows eligible. It allows eligible individuals, typically those accused of minor offenses, to avoid a criminal conviction by successfully completing specific requirements such as rehabilitation programs, community service, or restitution. Again, that was from Google. I'm not a lawyer.
Trustee Zizaro, I, I think your Google search is, is pretty accurate.
Way to go, AI.
It's been my experience as a defense attorney and also as a prosecutor, and I've been doing this for well over thirty-five years, that when you are afforded the diversion process, the case that's within the court system is continued for a period of time while the diversion process goes on. And so there's a moment when the prosecutor announces to the court, uh, and the defense attorney announced to the court that, uh, we'd like to access the diversion process, and it will benefit generally the defendant, uh, because ultimately if they success, they successfully complete all the obligations of diversion, the matter will ultimately be dismissed. And I, I don't know the particulars of this case, but what generally happens is there is a continuance of the, the case. It's held in legal limbo, so to speak, while one goes through the diversion process. That diversion process involves all kinds of, uh, mediation techniques, um, uh, sometimes involves public service, sometimes it involves, uh, getting together with the victim, uh, trying to talk through victimization, things like that. Uh, and there are other obligations of diversion. Again, I don't know the particulars of this case, but it's been my experience that when one goes through diversion, the criminal case is continued until the obligations are completed. Maybe they've been completed at this point, and that's what ultimately resulted in dismissal. It is not a vindication, though, because there is no, uh, no, there's been no pleading, there's no verdict.
Right.
Uh, there's been no jury. It's just an opportunity to do, uh, to, to go through an alternative process for the benefit of the defendant, as well as the court system, which, uh, has resources, uh, better limited. So that's essentially what's going on.
My right in understanding that the diversion process is basically they don't, you don't prove your innocence, but you don't really prove your guilt either.
There, there is no, there is no judiciary process once you go through diversion.
There was probably, there was charges that were made.
Right.
But the diversion process, she doesn't go through the court system.
Correct.
And it.
Chief O'Gaye, can you explain what happens when, um, a charge is made and how that process goes? I mean, like, what, what's involved in it?
When the initial call comes in, we have to review for probable cause. And when we review for probable cause, we have to make sure that we are seeing it, that there's proof beyond a reasonable doubt, because that's what the burden of proof is for the district attorney's office. So we have to review things, and then we reach out for assistance at times to make sure that we are doing the right steps. And we did reach out, and we made the decision based upon the evidence in hand, and the charge was made.
If I may, though, I, I understand Chief Ho Day, they're doing their best to gather evidence and so forth, but again, the fact that a charge is brought, one is presumed innocent through that charge, and despite the fact that the law enforcement folks think that they may have evidence sufficient to prove a case eventually, no case has been proven just by a mere bringing of a charge.
The diversion process makes it where we will never know in this situation whether there was.
From, from the criminal case. Yes. But again, this board could be satisfied that the, the process has worked ultimately? Um, and, or it may not be satisfied, and it, it feels that it needs to take an extra step for someone to his statute, which is a statute specific to municipalities.
And to, to me, on the civil side of things, and the statute for what we have here at the town, says that, you know, regardless, we do know she went there. And to me, that, that in and of itself is not, like, we should, we should look at things for, as a result.
Correct.
Uh, no, that's, that's not correct. Many people get caught up in a system, and, uh, some see that, uh, rather than go through a trial and have the DA prove the case beyond a reasonable doubt, which generally may take months and so forth, it may be an offer, uh, the diversion process may be an offer that actually is something of benefit, so is to move on. So many defendants are caught up in a system, um, and believe that this is the best way to go through the system. It's not admission of guilt.
Also not admission of innocence.
But the fact that there has been a charge, and there has been proceedings, meaning back and forth with lawyers and DAs and all of that, that there is enough there to pursue a diversion.
From, from a perspective of the government, yes.
Right, yes. So, um, you know, again, who are we representing and what is our responsibility? Is our responsibility to allow fellow trustees to harass our citizens? Or is it our responsibility to do good and responsible action for our citizens?
But I think the problem here is we, so the mayor made the proclamation, or a, a, a statement, right? And we said that we don't condone that behavior. However, we were going to wait and see what, how the process went, right? And so we were all of innocent until proven guilty, because that is what we, that's what we all kind of agreed on at that point, right? And so the problem I'm having with the diversion is, again, it's not, it's not proving anyone is guilty, it's not proving they're innocent. I've, you could have a driving offense and be offered, go take a class, and you won't get the points on your license. So does that mean I'm guilty, or does that just mean I did something to correct that behavior? So I'm, I'm, at the moment, based on all this discussion, kind of stuck. I'm not going to lie, because I'm not seeing where, and I understand where you're coming from, that we all agreed to go through the criminal process, and this diversion, I don't know if it's some sort of legal loophole that is not giving us innocent or guilty. It's just, you know what? I would be happy to just do these steps to not have to go through the rest of this process. And so I, I don't know that that's anyone saying that they're innocent or that they're saying they're guilty, and so that's where I'm, honestly, I'm stuck right now.
So, um, Attorney Bowman, I think that it would be helpful maybe to explain what the next process was if we were to go through it, because the way I see it is if charges are brought to her, then at that time, we would go through a process which would, it's quasi judicial, I don't know what the right terminology is. Okay. Quasi judicial, um, where we would, we would look at those things a little bit closer. I would think that we would have, you know, she would get her due process to be able to talk about her innocence and her perspective of what happened. On, and both sides, you know, you could bring together both sides to come in and talk about it. That's the purpose of, of that, that procedure in, in my eyes.
Okay. So what I'm, what I'm also hearing is, I mean, there's clearly members of the public who feel like there's more discussion to be had, but there's also members of the public probably who are like, let's just, this is over. So I can see where just having the discussion might be worth just hashing it out, because if we don't have the discussion, there's going to be people who are like, what, what did we, what did we as a board do? Because we, we don't condone any type of behavior like this. But again, I don't know. I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm kind of, what, what's the worst that could happen during this, having the additional discussion, us getting the information? We have not had a trial, however, clearly there's members of the public who are not happy about the situation. So do, is it our due diligence just to hash it out and come to a conclusion? Or to not do anything at all and never have the discussion? Like, I, I honestly, I, I don't know.
It's been hashed out in court.
What is the, like, so the next step is to bring a written charge. What would the written, what would the written charge be?
Generally, it, it.
No, no. Specifically to this?
It'd be, it would involve generally malfeasance or some sort of, um, uh, specific, uh, charge of, of official misconduct.
Code of conduct? Yeah.
Up to the podium.
Well, I, I really like.
And state your name.
I'm sorry, Maureen Morgan. I really appreciate your time.
It does go down.
Um, it's just, you know, and I personally, because I'm here, I really appreciate all of you taking this seriously, because it is true. It is, the law, so this is true. And I think that I was, I was able to, I was kind of, I was coming up with it, to do it, it's just like, I think, because, right? But I think it was still actually a time that you can say, um, I got to make it all of you, and, um, very well.
We wouldn't even be here under these circumstances if something hadn't happened. So if you just take it all the way back upstream and you, you just simply ask yourself as a trustee, is, is this kind of misconduct or malfeasance, no matter whether it's guilty or not guilty, is it acceptable behavior for trustees to intimidate, harass, stalk, affect our citizens? That simple question. Should we, any of us, be conducting our behavior with our public that way? It's a very simple, black and white question for me. And if you guys are okay with that, I, I, I don't know who I'm operating with then. I don't know who I'm operating with, and that concerns me.
I think, you know, just.
You are responding on an assumption of guilt.
I am not responding on an assumption of guilt.
So I, I think the, I think the procedure of going through the charges would tell us more information and make us better able to come together as, as a board. To be quite honest, you would then get more information to make a decision.
Well, honestly, I've seen no facts. Like, I.
Right.
I, I personally have not read the police report. Like, I, I know nothing about this, because we were waiting to see what happened.
And just like in, in the charges, the criminal charges, civil, civil charges as well would also be conducted where there would be somebody directing it that does not have any skin in the game. They're, they're like a mediator or, or somebody that's not involved in the, in our discussions and whatnot. And it gives her the opportunity to state her case and, and talk about her innocence. And it, it's not just about Lucy's charges, but it's also about, um, trustee Hartz and being able to vindicate herself as well. So I, I don't know. I think that, to me, that's fair, especially if you have somebody in our, you have citizens that feel that they were wronged. I think if I was in the same situation, I would hope that my town board would, would at least look into it in depth. And that's all that is, is looking into it in depth.
Well, and for the public's information, what happens is, uh, charges are brought by, by a member of the board towards another board member. There is an actual quasi judicial hearing, a hearing, and both sides can bring in representation, so witnesses, um, other people to speak. So this is how, how this would work. So, um, it's a, it's a, it says the board of trustees is not acting as a legislative body, but as the judiciary is, is the matter. The board's decision must be based on evidence presented at this hearing as it applies to the removal of a trustee. And so there, there are no technical rules of evidence that, um, do not apply, so relevant documents, that sort of thing. People, you can bring in people to speak for you, so that's what would happen. That's the steps, that, that there would be charges brought by a member of the board, and then there would be a hearing. And after that hearing, the decision would be made.
So the charges being brought by the board would have to be written, correct?
Correct. They have to be written, yes.
So it has to be a written.
Correct.
Okay. Who's going to write that?
The person that brings the charge?
Okay, so.
So it's a non, non-voting person, and I would not be voting, and I would bring the charges.
So you would bring the charges, and then that, they hear it and I'll vote it?
Correct.
Understand the situation, yeah. I mean, I feel like.
Because that wouldn't be fair for her if I voted on it, um, after I brought charges, so.
I feel as if we, this will never be settled unless we have a discussion. And as a board, we've not had a formal discussion, and I think having this hearing is what provides Alexis, trustee Hartz, with the opportunity for telling us what happened, because I have not heard that. And so I think if this gives trustee Hartz the opportunity to tell us her side of the story, and then we get to make a decision based on hearing all of the arguments, all of the facts, I mean, it, this is never going to be settled if we don't.
It is much more involved than just a discussion. It is a hearing, it is a quasi judicial hearing. You have someone that brings a charge, you have a hearing officer that will conduct the hearing, uh, again, uh, from the fair and impartial perspective, again, someone that's not voting. They will, again, uh, follow the rules to the extent that, uh, the evidence with regards to the malfeasance or the misconduct will go first. Trustee Hartz and/or her representative would have the opportunity to cross-examine those witnesses, uh, attack that evidence, um, and then she'd be given the opportunity to present her own case after the fact. This, and so it's not a discussion. And then after all that's done and complete, the quasi judicial board will then convene, uh, to discuss the matter and take a vote as to how they decide, and generally provide written findings of fact and conclusions based upon those written findings. And then perhaps that's an appealable order that, uh, trustee Hartz might have an opportunity to, to appeal. I'm not sure which body she'd appeal to, but it needs to happen in that, in that fashion.
So in your experience, if you had this happen, or who had this hearing officer?
Yeah. So that's something for you also to decide, is who might your hearing officer be? Is it going to be the person that brought the charge, perhaps? Do you engage some neutral person? There has been some suggestion that maybe a county commissioner might want to do that. I don't know that La Plata County would actually allow, uh, one of its commissioners to do that, but you might find your need to, to get a, a neutral hearing officer to conduct this. You also have some issues with your town attorney, because I represent the entirety of the board, that includes trustee Hartz, and includes trustee Katsos, all of you. And, uh, the question is, is she is, will be entitled to get her own attorney if she, she wants, but you may need to engage separate counsel just for purposes of advising you going through this quasi judicial process. Maybe not, but you may feel more comfortable ultimately from a, uh, from a, you know, a neutral standpoint, engaging someone just for that purpose. I don't know if, uh, your municipal judge, Dablin, might, uh, be engaged for either the hearing officer or perhaps to help advise. or perhaps to help advise. No, I, I'm not sure how you'd want to handle it. That's really your decision going forward. Should you decide to even go through the process?
So what do we do first? We make a motion to see if we want to have a hearing?
Yeah, I, I would suggest that, uh, perhaps, uh, Trustee Moreland will make a motion, and that there be, if there's a second, that there be a vote on whether to actually even proceed with having a charge be brought and proceeding with a, with a quasi-judicial process. And then deciding those other issues after that vote.
So
If, if the vote is affirmative.
Is there a cost associated with all of this? I'm hearing lawyers, I'm hearing legal, I'm like, and who's paying for that? Like, uh, is there a budget for this? Okay. I mean, I get the importance, but I'm also trying to be fiscally responsible and what, I don't even know what this would cost.
With all respect to all these issues, because they're all valid, everybody's issues being thought or you guys are, don't, really, you don't have a town manager at this point. You, you, you've got a local town manager, he's on vacation, uh, you've not got a town manager. Um, that would perhaps be helpful moving through this process, I don't know. Uh, again, I can't answer your budget questions, I can tell you this better process.
Okay.
It's gonna be a process, depending on the time at the moment, do I get something on the ballot? Or, we have other priorities?
I mean, I get it, but I'm just saying in the whole scheme of things.
Yeah, step up to the mic.
Um, I, I'm sorry, I'm a virgin, and, um, just to avoid all of this, I really, like, um, what's this, I just, I just, I'm not so, I don't know, I don't have the time, it's, it's, I don't know.
This is the way voices get silenced.
Do we have to pursue this right now, or?
So, could this be pursued at a future date? I mean, is there a timeline? Is there an expiration?
There is no timeline, no.
Okay. Okay. Now, again, I'm just trying to
There's no statute of limitations on it.
Okay.
Um, so, if we make a motion, the motion, you, you mentioned like two things in, in the process of a motion, and I'm sorry I didn't attach everything that you said. If I make a motion, the motion is to go with the written charges, or to go with the charge, or?
To have someone present a charge, because there has been no charge.
Okay, gotcha.
There's no formal charge.
Um, so, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to present a charge against Trustee Hartz under CRS 31-4-307 to pursue proceedings of removal of a trustee.
And I will second that.
Didn't she just say that she was gonna present the char? I, I'm asking, because, uh, the way I understood what she just said, and I'm, I'm only trying to get clarification, I'm not arguing with you, but it sounded like she said to present a charge. What's the charge?
You don't have a charge before you. This is just preliminary, to just say
So it'd be for
We wanna, we would like to, we'd like to engage in this process, or not engage in this process.
Okay, all right, I'm just clarifying.
You bet.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg.
No.
Trustee Zazaro.
Yes.
Trustee Hartz.
No.
Trustee Katsos.
Yes.
Trustee Moreland.
Yes.
Trustee McLaren.
Yes.
Mayor Ah.
No.
So that, uh, it appears to be a four-three vote, and so, uh, I would suggest that a charge be drafted, um, and brought before this board, and if ultimately approved by the board, that charge, uh, then the, uh, there'd be, uh, a formal proceeding and dates and, and decision made with regards to who's going to preside over the hearing, who is, uh, going to be perhaps your attorney. Um, uh, a, once that happens, then Trustee Hartz should have that charge formally delivered to her, and she should have a certain amount of time before a hearing is, uh, scheduled, so she can prepare to do what she needs to do, uh, in defense.
I would just like to say that I think that whoever is involved in this action, it should not be you, or should not be, um, Trustee Moreland here. I think it's somebody more objective, like you're talking about the judge, or
No, I wouldn't be, that's what I was saying earlier.
Well, I'm trying to be as objective as I can, Trustee McLaren, and
Well, I know you are, but it's pretty hard, I mean, you're human, right? I think so.
Well, yes.
(laughing).
Yes.
Can't we make a motion on that?
No, point's well taken.
I would just help with the charge, and then back up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, since I don't want the people that all worry about it all that, they need, we need a whole front row seat.
Okay, moving on, the Board of Trustees reports and requests for future agenda items. I'd like to thank Attorney Goldman for his letter addressing the board on the, everyone with a number of the trustees just emailing him and calling him and, um, just at Will or at Laura or at, at any time in the letter stating that we need to get, we need to stop this activity.
Yeah, it, it, you know, it's not, it's not that, that much, and it's, it's just, uh, it's a great point that was made, and you guys should develop a policy with regards to, uh, when, when you contact your town attorney. There may be instances where it's gonna be important. Uh, I think this last discussion kind of proves that up a bit. Um, but, a policy by this board with regards to the use of the town attorney, uh, by certain trustees individually or a group of trustees would be very, very helpful. And I think, again, your town manager should be involved in helping you draft that policy.
I agree.
And again, Trustee Nyberg, uh, won't be at the next planning commission meeting? Trustee Hartz?
Nothing. Thank you.
Trustee Katsos?
Well, um, I know that, uh, Trustee Moreland and I both attended the CML conference. We learned quite a bit, um, most of it devastating news. Um, we, we went to several different seminars that talked about funding and, um, the implications, the potential implications of the reconciliation bill by the feds. Um, the big, big fiscal picture is four trillion will be added in spending and tax cuts, 1.5 trillion in spending cuts, overall 2.5 trillion net deficit increase. Net deficit increase to the tune of $3.1 trillion with interest. Um, there will be an extension of the 2017 tax cuts and other tax changes, threats to Medicaid, SNAP, energy tax credits, energy development, and permitting. Um, give you an example, cuts in, uh, state programs such as DOLA. $49 billion cut. Um, National Science Foundation, $5 billion cut. Environmental Protection Agency, $5 billion cut. Um, Health and Human Services, $33 billion cut. Agriculture, $5 billion cut. Agriculture. Education, $12 billion cuts. Defense will get $113 billion more dollars. And Homeland Security will get $42 billion more dollars. Um, that was brought to us by, um, the governor's office. That rolled into a DOLA presentation. And sadly, DOLA is what, uh, funds our community development block grants. This is for public facilities, economic development, housing, disaster recovery. Um, an example is, uh, Boys and Girls Club might not get any funding. Fire disaster will not get any additional funding. There's community service blocks grants, um, and this is to, um, alleviate the causes and conditions of great poverty. And the kind of funding cuts you can expect, senior nutritional funding. Um, there's, uh, money for homeless, domestic abuse, sexual assault victims, gone. Um, anticipated reductions in energy-related programs. Uh, microgrids for rural counties so we can have our own fallback plan should anything happen to our grid. And then county emergency programs. Um, pretty, pretty, pretty sad, uh, and disturbing. I know that I came back just thinking about my community and how I can continue to support my community and find the resources needed to do what we need to do. Um, we have about, uh, we have a budget season coming up, um, and we're gonna have to look at that. But the one good thing that we learned was, um, there is a software program called Balancing Act that helps in creating balanced budgets and finding where you have a little extra money to shift and move. Um, it was very insightful, I'm very glad I attended and, um, was quite impressed. Um, the next Economic Alliance meeting that I'll be attending is next Tuesday.
Trustee McLaren.
Something new to report, I thought I would have something by now.
Trustee Moreland.
So just like, um, Chief Katsos, I also attended the CML conference and, uh, and unfortunately, which is pretty true, it's a little, little scary out there. We also attended some other things that were kind of cool, um, we talked about AI in government. Um, I know there's a big, um, fury about artificial intelligence in, in the government, but it does have a 94% rate, um, accuracy rate, um, we do, um, work with AI. And, um, what can take somebody an hour to get ready, you can look at all the information, can take AI 26 seconds to get that info. But it does still mean you should, um, check your work. Um, don't just trust it because it takes information from all over the place, um, to come up with that information, so you still need to verify your sources. Anyways, I thought that was really cool to, to, um, kind of talk about it. Something we may want to think about in, um, some of the resolutions that are presented. They do have some AI organizations that are specific to government, um, which could help in, you know, presentations, resolutions, all that stuff. So I thought that was kind of cool, something we might want to look into at some point. You know, um, we, we attended a rural reality, um, where they talked about budgeting season and to be conservative and, 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 and all of these, um, reductions in funding and stuff like that. Uh, and so I think it's really imperative that our, our leaders and our staff kind of take a look at, you know, how to, you know, technically build up as much as you can and be conservative, not necessarily mean you think that long, but whatever you say comes up. Um, so I think as we start to approach that budgeting, we really, really want to get that. It's really, you know, one of the things they express too is it's really important to have a vision. So it's gonna be our job as a board to figure out what that vision looks like next year and take into consideration those budget type of constraints and possibilities and, and look into how the spending is being done, maybe tighten up our belts. On another level, we ran into Sarah.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, Sarah's with that, um, organization that got us all the grants for, um, the energy efficiency stuff. Um, and we may want to revisit with her because we were talking to her a little bit, and she said that, and, and this is true, our air conditioner, you know, the HVAC systems in both buildings do need
Replacement.
Some replacement, and there is some ways around that in those grants that we may still be able to take advantage of some of those funds, and we should do it as soon as we can. So, um, that's all I have on CML. There was so much more, I could go on and on because it was, you know, three and a half days' worth of information. Um, the, um, Alliance Board Meeting is tomorrow, um, and so I will be attending that tomorrow, and then I don't really have anything to report on regional housing.
Trustee Nyberg?
Trustee Zazaro?
Um, thankfully Chief Evans came tonight because I was going to talk about everything that he mentioned since I was at their, uh, board meeting last week. Um, I don't know if you all saw this in the news, but there was an active shooter in Idaho where the shooter set a fire and then targeted the firefighters, which is horrific. Um, so that's been kind of circulating around, um, recently since that just happened. Um, in lighter news, uh, thank you to Chief Ho Gay, who was working on a Ring Public Safety Program. I was looking at the Nextdoor app, and someone was talking about, um, what'd you call it? Ding, ding dong ditch? And I guess this was happening over in Clover Seven, and then I think it was happening over in, uh, maybe in Dove Ranch. So I was like, hey, chief, did you see this? And he goes, this is what I'm working on right now. And then all of a sudden, we have a solution. Did you want to share with the group what you're doing?
Um, Ring has a public safety program that all owners of Ring, it's through their system, and the public safety module, if a crime happens or an incident happens in a certain part of our neighborhoods within town, I can geolocate that on their map and send out an email request to all of them to see if they have any video documenting an incident, so.
So don't pick your nose in front of your ring.
Because there could be a crime happening straight over and you're busted.
But we don't get live access, the homeowners can provide it if they want. It's not mandated or anything like that. So we put out an email, if something happens, and they go, hey, this is what we caught at 2:00 AM in the morning on that date. This is what the vehicle looks like. So then we can actually go to other businesses, other towns, and look up ALPRs, look up business videos and all that other stuff to help solve crimes. Um, I've utilized them before, it does work because it winds up that the homeowners want to be just part of the crime solving is, you know, on TV, so it, it does work. It's free, we're not promoting Ring as the company, but they do have the public safety module. I've reached out to Simply Safe, and I'm looking at others to make sure that, that, do they have a platform we can be a part of as well? But it allows us to, and we can send out, community-wide, if we have a water thing, we can send it out to all the Ring owners. If we have other issues, we can send it out on their, on their app, and every Ring owner gets it that's within that geolocate that I do.
Well, and for the public's information, it happened to us twice. Um, and it happens later at night, anytime after 10:30. This person, what it, we've got video of them, um, on our camera, which is not Ring. Um, but, um, it doesn't matter, just letting you know. Um, my husband reported it and, um, spoke to, um, uh,
Sergeant? Officer.
Officer Moreland, and he recommended that if you do get this person that bangs on your door, and they sound like they are in distress, they don't just knock or whatever, they, they come up and they pound on your door. And so, you know, it's pretty shocking when that occurs. Um, and they appear to be like in their twenties. So, um, we've got, it's happened twice, but we put a motion detector light on our front porch. They tried, they walked up, and it caught them like just coming up our sidewalk. And so, um, and our camera was able to capture these individual pictures. So just FYI for the public, and we were also told that when it happens to call 911. And it's interesting because we have no traffic in our town after 9:00 PM. So if you call 911, more than likely, the officer's gonna be driving up your street as these yahoos are driving down the street, and you can hopefully apprehend these guys. So FYI.
I do appreciate, a lot of the homeowners are on their local Facebooks posting it, but they never tell us. but they never tell us. And sometimes we do see the Facebook posts, and we'll solve it and go to the homeowner and say, hey, this is what we got, but they're not reporting it to us all the time. So a lot of the stuff that you guys hear, we don't hear, they don't really report it.
Time can be FBS.
Yes.
So it's better to report it than to put it on Facebook. Does anybody else experiencing this? Now, you can do that after the fact, but at least report.
And that's why the systems that are on our cars with the license plate readers up front, as we're driving through, it's logging every vehicle we go by. So if something does happen in the neighborhood at a certain time, we can go and check our logs to see what license plates were there. And so there's a lot of technology that we're utilizing, a lot of stuff we're trying to get as free as possible.
Mm-hmm.
And we're trying to make the town safer, but I'm trying to put it in the hands of the residents as well. You've got to protect yourselves, you've got to make sure you have certain things. If you have questions about what you need, call us, we'll go out there. I was certified in SEPTED years ago, but the concept is still the same. That's crime prevention through environmental design. It's why you put rose bushes underneath your bedroom window. No one's going to break into that window. So.
Yes, yeah.
It teaches you what to do as far as your landscaping, how to make it to protect your house, your residences and everything like that. Your motion lights, very, very important nowadays. And the camera systems are very important as well for us and for you. I mean, there's more to just home safety. You've got risk management, liability. If someone trips on your property or falls on your property, your camera's there, it picks it up and so forth like that. But it's just trying to educate the community as we're going along with these things, because things pop up, we'll think about it and figure out what we can do to help the community, and we'll put it out there for you.
Well, thank you, chief.
You're welcome.
Again, thank you. That's it for me.
Do we have any other discussions?
Uh huh.
Are we doing the executive session?
I don't know. Do we have anything to report on, that we can report in public?
Yeah, I can just let you know that I have been engaged with your selection, Mr. Waters, and have, I'm just awaiting on him right now. I've made him an offer, I've sent him a draft contract. He has a number of questions that he has been addressing to third-party groups with regards to typical issues, cost of living, the schools, things like that. I expect to hear from him tomorrow with regards to some response.
Does it expire?
We can put an expiration. I think he understands time is of the essence, and I did put in, I sent him an email this afternoon and said, listen, I've got this board meeting tonight, and I'd like to report to the board on where we're at. He hasn't gotten back to me. I don't know if, I don't know what his circumstances are right now, so maybe he's got a family emergency or something else that I'm just not aware of, but I'm sure he'll, he'll contact. When, when he does, I will, I'll report to each of you, just don't respond back to me and reply all of them.
Yep.
Okay?
That's great.
Do you let us know if he does not contact?
I will.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you, Mike.
Any other questions? Okay, we're going to adjourn this meeting at 8:23 for.
Yeah, that's right.
July 1st.
I know.
Public now, he just mentioned.
That's, that's what I'm thinking.
Is that where you're going?
Yeah.
Is that right?
I don't know.
Public now?
Yeah.
Public now.
He just, he just gave the name.
Yeah.